Stu, yes.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Councilmember Brown. Good evening, City Manager. How are you?
Good evening, good.
And everyone else on the call.
Is Jennifer here?
Yes.
Yes, Jennifer.
Okay.
Yep, sorry, I'm here. Good evening.
Okay. Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good.
I'll call the roll. Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Somerville.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Jones Chance.
Present.
So, present, there's a quorum.
All right, thank you. We move on.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the next item on the agenda is the agenda approval.
Are there any corrections, I mean additions or corrections, Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Um, I'd like to deal with the conundrum that we have up front. We have a discussion item on for Ward 1 council appointment as item 10. And for various reasons, I have, I feel like we have a duly elected Ward 1 councilperson, but we don't have a mayor. By the city charter and by the code and by the state statutes, so I would like to address that at some point here fairly early on. So I would, I don't know, that is the discussion item that needs to come up or that we need to have a new discussion item added before, before that. So after the seating, new council. Or the resolutions.
If Mr. Barr would like to make comments on that.
Morning. Yes, I'd be happy to. The situation is very unique here because of a number of different items. First of all, the city charter some years ago was changed and provided for partisan elections. And then not too long ago, the state legislature decided that there should only be three times for elections during the year. And one in May, one in August for the primary election, and one in December for, in November for the new election. The city charter provides that when the office of mayor becomes vacant, that the council will at the next general election elect a successor. However, that provision in the charter was entered before the changes in the legislature providing for three different times of election. And so in this particular case with the timing, when the mayor resigned and left a vacancy, there was not time for a number of reasons for the, for the vote of a new mayor at the next general election. So the charter provides that when the office of mayor becomes vacant, the mayor pro tem becomes the mayor. And then, as I said, the charter says if the next general election, a new mayor is elected, but for a number of reasons which I put in a memo previously, that election could not happen. And so my opinion is since there is no election and since we have a person serving in the office of mayor, that person serves until the next general election when a new mayor can be elected, which is November of the next general election. And so we have a situation where we have a person is the sitting mayor. And because of some other things that happened, that person Lois Richardson had previously filed to be reelected as first ward councilperson. And while she was serving as mayor and while the election happened, the voters voted to elect her to the first ward position. And so she now is mayor and she has been elected to another office. And the law is clear that she cannot hold both of those offices at the same time. And if she accepts the position of first ward council member, then she can no longer be in the office of mayor. If she continues in the office of mayor and declines the office of first ward council member, then that will create a vacancy in the office of first ward council member. And then the city charter provides a provision where city council fills that office. So that's where we are and Councilmember Wilcoxen. The ball at this time is really in Mayor Richardson's court. And at some point, she is going to have to decide if she is going to continue as mayor or if she is going to continue, if she is going to accept the election as first ward council member.
Is there a timeframe in which that's supposed to happen?
Yes, Councilmember Morgan, there is. The city charter provides that if they're, if they are elected or appointed to an office, that they have to take the oath of office within 10 days of being notified of that election or appointment.
May I ask?
Not, if they do not take the oath of office within that time, then the office becomes vacant.
May I ask a follow-up question? So a, as it stands right now, we have two or three people in the Ward 1 seats.
Well, is that a question or a statement?
Um, it's a question. Do we?
Actually, we have one person in that seat.
Who was that?
That would be Brian Jones Chance.
Okay.
Because he was, he was duly elected and his successor has not been yet appointed to fill that seat.
I have a question. So do we have to, would Brian just automatically just be on council?
Well, he's on council until his successor is duly appointed and takes office. So in other words, if today Mayor Richardson accepted the election of first ward councilperson, she would be sworn in and then Brian's term would end. However, if she waits the 10 days, whatever the timing is, and I have not counted, I don't know when she received notice of the election, that she was formally elected. But Brian would serve until that time. At that time, when, when she would refuse the part, the position, then council would appoint a successor.
In that 10 days that she may accept to reject the position in Ward 1, is she acting mayor and acting Ward 1?
No, she can only act in one office at a time. So she will be mayor until she accepts that position or resigns or whatever.
So I, I have questions and I disagree with, with that interpretation of what's there. I, and I mentioned this before at a meeting, I brought it up and, and it kind of got glossed over in that. There's various, very different language in different parts of the charter that, that talk about when account, the mayor pro tem sends the, the position of the mayor, then that is until the next general election. It doesn't say, you know, if we can't have an election, it says the next general election. And so what you're saying is that, that because there hasn't been a, an election, then the person in that position continues on until the successor is, is determined. But you've made the assumption that, that that means the next general election two years later rather than a special election or, or any other scenario that, that we have agency to do. The city charter does give us the, does have language in there about holding a special election. And, you know, as I said before, the, the difference between that, that language about the, the general election and the language concerning the mayor pro tem being until, or the, the appointment of a councilperson until the end of the, end of term. And so the difference in those two do, two sets of language, to me, doesn't leave it open that, that that means the next general election that we're not held over a barrel by two political parties because we can't have a primary. It's until the next general election, which is already passed. And so having this be a choice of somebody who, you know, leaving that up to a choice of a person of whether they want to be mayor or not. I mean, that, that doesn't seem like it fits any of the language in our charter or in the state statutes.
Did you want me to respond?
Sure, if you like.
All right. What the charter says, filling of vacancies, this is in 2.05. Mayor, vacancies occurring in the office of mayor shall be filled by the mayor pro tem until the next general election. And vacancies occurring in the office of mayor pro tem shall be filled for the balance of the unexpired term of mayor pro tem by appointment of members of council. And I, I agree with you. That's what the charter says. It says until the next general election. However, as I pointed out, there's a number of things that happened and we have partisan elections. And the county clerk and the state election official said that we could not have a general election for mayor in November of 2020 because of the timing of the nomination election, which is in August. And that timing, for a number of reasons, it did not fit in. And so there could not be partisan nominations for mayor for the election of 2020. And therefore, we could not have that election. And so that means that the, if there's no election, then there's no one filling that seat.
So.
So Steve, could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, I'm having some video problems. I hope to be on video soon. But, um, so Mr. Barr, if I heard what you had said earlier, it was a little bit different, I think, than what I had understood previously about, you know, having a general election. And so it sounded like, right, we couldn't have a general election in, in, within the timeframe. But I know for me, I don't know that I quite understand why then we wouldn't just have it the next available general election, which I think is at April? For, you know, for the seat of mayor? No?
No, the charter and the state law is clear on what a general election means. A general election is an election in even numbered years for election of officers.
Okay, thanks.
One, one other thing on that. I'm sorry, this is confusing and it's so many things have happened to affect it. But the city charter has specific language that we can have special elections. That's clear. However, as I pointed out, the state legislature said, yes, we could have special elections, but you can only have elections during three dates in the year. I think it's in May, in August, and in November. And so if you have, you can't, and you can't elect people in a special election for a primary. And, and the main, the main date is not a general election.
Counsel, if I, if I may to stick it with Robert's rules, if, if, while we're approving the agenda, if it could just be amended to add this exact conversation prior to the inauguration and then approve the agenda as amended?
I'll move to do that. I was, I was gonna ask that myself.
Or?
Mayor, you're muted.
It's been moved in second to move item 10 to before the inauguration of the council members in the seating. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. You may continue. Was Mr. Barr or was it Jennifer that was speaking? I'm not sure.
Oh, no, I'm good. I, my question was answered. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
So the answer that I'm taking away from this is that, that a special election in May does not constitute a general election. And, and it's not clear to me why there's, there can't be a primary before that. It seems like, it seems like we could have had a general election, but we would have been sued by parties. It wasn't that we couldn't have had it, but we, we ran the risk of getting sued by one of the parties that didn't, wasn't able to run a candidate. So I'm just trying to figure this out process-wise because this is such a sticking point and we haven't addressed it in, in, in the next months. I think this should be a priority to, to rectify this. And this is gonna have to be part of a, a charter amendment that would come up on the next ballot as well. And, you know, if we're looking at that, you know, part of the, the other things that I wanted to discuss later on is, is what that looks like in terms of having just a charter commission again. So.
Well, I agree that there is the, probably the necessity or the, the, should, the charter should be considered to be amended in some fashion because a number of these things have come together. As I pointed out, the timing, the action up in the state legislature, fact that we're one of only three cities in the state that have partisan elections. The, the timing of these events, all of that came together to give a really unusual situation. And Councilmember Wilcoxen, I don't, I, I sympathize with, with your feelings on the matter because it does not, you know, it does not give it a result. In my opinion, it feels really full or complete. But that's looking at it as best I can. That is my opinion. And the city clerk, I think, asked if we get a state attorney general's opinion. It's only my opinion. I guess, I'm not sure what happened on that, but we haven't had another opinion. I'd be happy to have another opinion, but at this time, this is my opinion. And I, I think it's right, looking at all of the factors and trying to weave everything into one coherent idea. And I think that's what it is. It's a little strange result, I agree. But under all of the circumstances, that is. And the idea, the reason that we did not have a general election for mayor in 2020, in November 2020, is because the state election officials said that it was not proper because partisan elections would not have time to file for candidates because of the time that the primary election is in August. Now, so if, if we did have an election and it was illegal, which the state election officials seemed to say it was in the county, then we have, we're doing an illegal lag. And I, I suppose you would be right, that we would get sued. If we want to take action, you know, in, in the face of the law and get sued, then that's a policy decision that council has to make.
What are some policy, what are some charter amendments that we could lean toward that would kind of reasonably assure that we're not caught up in this way of doing business that seems sparse and transparent and unclear?
Well, the, the first thing that comes to mind is that we could change the charter and have non-partisan elections. However, Councilmember Morgan, that was brought before the people, I think, in, in a year or so ago. And the people would not vote to have non-partisan elections. So that's been tried. Although if we go back again, maybe they would change their mind. Another thing that could happen is that the language in the charter could be sharpened in this situation to provide that when there is a vacancy, what happens and when the term ends, when it becomes vacant. The, the language now in the charter is unfortunately not specific and clear in that regard. And I, if I looked at it, I could probably come up with a couple of other items and we could tailor the elections in accordance with the new state law that regulates the time of elections. And our charter does have, and the law does provide, that our, with our city charter, we have leeway in our elections. But we have to follow the state election law overall.
Mayor, Councilmember Jones Chance has his hand.
I'm sorry, Councilman Chance.
Yeah, one of the, I, I do agree that we ought to consider a charter commission to really sharpen the language. And I think in the case of appointed council members, it would be wise to consider limiting those appointed terms to a maximum of two years. So either you finish the person, the prior councilperson's term or you have a maximum term of two years, whichever is earliest. That way you can participate in the regular election along with the other ward member. And that term for the election, let's say it's two years, would only be an additional two years so that we could maintain the staggered, the staggered terms between the two council members. I think, I think that would be a wise thing to do and I would, you know.
Councilmember Jones Chance, and I was, if you look at the, that similar section in the charter for appointed council members, they would be appointed until the, the next general election and that, that person elected would fill the full, the term. So that, that's already.
So, I mean, if, so let's say this current term that, then this vacancy that I'm filling, since there was no time for that election to happen properly. So you're saying that we could have an election in a normal, in a normal year. I'm, I'm talking about two elections at a time. So let's say it's, you know, Nicole and I in 2022, for example, we could both run except whoever's running for my seat would only be two years. Percy would be four. Do you understand?
Correct. It, it wouldn't be a, a scenario in which the ballot would read, you know, elect, uh, vote for not more than two because they would be two separate limits. One would expire in 2024 and the other in 2026.
Okay. Well, I, I think, you know, a maximum would be good, so. And is my understanding correct that, so currently that's the way it is. But is my understanding correct that if there were to be an appointment for this seat, that, 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 that would only be two years, correct? Or is this a four-year?
Correct. It'd be two-year appointments. And then in 2022, assuming that the vacancy occurred in Ward 1, there'd be two elections for Ward 1, one that would expire in '24 and the other in '26.
Okay. Yeah, one of my concerns was that, was really just the idea of a four-year appointment. That did not seem.
Yeah, that makes things so much clearer for me.
So where is that language? Because in the.
I've never seen that before, just now hearing it. So thank you.
I've seen to the end of the term. So if this was a four-year term.
It's in 2.2.05 D3. This council member, notwithstanding any provision of this charter, to the contrary, vacancies occurring in the office of council member for more than 90 days before the next regular city election shall be filled on or before the third regular council meeting following such vacancy by a majority vote of the remaining members of council. Set appointee to hold office until the next city election at which election such vacancy shall be filled by any balance of the original unexpired term. City elections are defined in the same way that general elections are. So they would occur the Tuesday following the first, Monday in even numbered years.
All right. I must have missed the, the part about the city elections. My apologies.
That makes a lot more sense, I think. That was a concern. I mean, not, not trying to be presumptive or you're presumptuous or anything, but of the idea of a four-year appointment did strike me as not fair. So.
Yeah, I had issued, like, it just seems like voter disenfranchisement too. So good to have the clarification.
What does all that mean?
The discussion.
So what does that mean? That's a lot of discussion. Thank you. Okay. Back to the, so.
For what it's worth, I think that there, there, there should be, you know, but I guess from the way it sounds to me, that based on Mr. Barr's opinion and based on the state's law that govern these kind of circumstances, it would appear that I'm not required to vacate the seat that I'm holding. But I would say unlike the mayor and the, and the rest of you now, I have not been elected to serve in this capacity or any capacity. And I, and I would voluntarily vacate the seat to remove any ambiguity and allow for a, a fair process to take place. And that just seems fair to me. And I mean, I, I look forward to any appointment process that you all come up with. And I, I hope to be serving with, you know, serving Ward 1 with you all again. But that just seems fair, fair to me. So if that matters in this discussion, that is what I would do. If what I would do, you know, helps you decide what you would do.
Councilmember Morgan.
Appreciate that candor. Thank you so much. Taking one for the team if need be. But, um, what's more interesting, I would like to know if it's possible to make public record what Mayor Richardson's position is and how long she's received that letter. And is that within the 10 days to give us an opportunity to find out how to move forward? If that could be made public record or if that's something that we shouldn't know? Because that, before Brian, before you make a decision, that's the ultimate decision. Um, that I think we're all waiting there.
Well, if I'm, if I'm understanding, the election, you know, was November 3rd, so we're on day six.
So we.
The 13th of Friday would be the.
That's why, I mean, I guess that's why the organization meeting is now.
Okay. Well, cool. We're within that four-day range. Thank you, Will. That's public record.
So in council, I, I believe that, and, and Mr. Barr, correct me if I'm wrong. The, so the, the charter does state that any appointee or any elected official has 10 days to either take the oath of office or the office remains, or would become vacated. If, if it becomes vacated, then council would still need to fill by appointment the next two years.
Yes, I believe that's correct.
And so that would leave Brian Jones Chance filling that until that process has been fulfilled?
I would vacate.
Right, but as far as the charter says.
Well, I can vacate on anything.
The charter is silent on that provision. And the, the rule that a, a office is not vacated until a successor is, takes, legally takes office is a, is a rule of law. It's not in the charter. And it's for policy reasons.
So then Brian would be, would be through the next three meetings. We have three meetings to, to fill that seat by the appointment process, right?
Well, as I understand the facts at this time, Brian would, Councilmember Chance Jones would fill the seat until his successor was legally seated.
In which case, we'd go through the same process that we, that we've always gone through for the appointments?
Yes.
With applications, things like that. So then that's Brian's thing, his choices.
How you fill the appointment is up to council. That's not specified in the charter. But over the years, there's been a process developed.
And I think what I was saying was that I would voluntarily vacate, so it would be vacant. I mean, you can't, you can't hold me here, right?
I don't know. You could be in Zoom land forever.
I, I mean, I, I, I just want it to be fair. So.
Sure, sure.
I mean, can Councilmember Jones Chance be on council and seek the appointment process simultaneously? Or must he have a vacated seat?
Well, he, he could be on council and apply for another position, yes. But within, within 10 days, I think the seat will be open. But he would continue until the successor is appointed and takes office.
I have a quick question. I have a quick question since for, um, so technically though, like I'm assuming, cause we haven't gotten to this part yet, Lois is not going to take the oath of office for Ward One, I'm assuming. So then hypothetically, we could make that determination tonight if we wanted to appoint someone to Ward One and the process for that. Am I understanding this incorrectly or?
Not, uh, council member, I'm not sure of what your question is, but the, the, uh, right to either take the oath of office or not take the oath, oath of office would be in the person who's been elected.
Right. So, okay, so assuming that M- Mayor Richardson wants to remain mayor and not take the oath of office for the Ward One seat, we would have a vacancy tonight. No, 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 sorry. I'm confusing myself because you already explained the part where, yeah, sorry. Um.
Well, back up. Let me interrupt for just a minute and back up. If coun- if Mayor Richardson tonight declined the office of First Ward, then council could move forward to fill that vacancy.
Like tonight?
Yes, well, yes, sure.
Okay, that's in, okay, interesting. So I realize that councilmember Jones Chance had already indicated that he'd be interested in voluntarily vacating, but I'm actually interested in, you know, potentially just making a motion to reappoint him tonight.
Can I ask, can I ask some question? Um, when we think about process, we think about fair process now, again, for the public record, if a Mayor Richardson's name was not on the ballot, the lead and vote getter would be Karan Games. Um, that, that must be said. Now, that being said, um, it's fair for the appointment process to be taken. So I, I think to appoint someone to this, when two people have fair, short, um, campaigns in which they finished, um, the appointment process, um, and especially the people had spoken on some level when it came to, um, election, um, voter, uh, uh, voter turnout or whatever. Um, so I think that has to be said, um, because again, the lead and vote getter was someone running who could not be removed from the ballot. So we want the process to still be fair to, uh, the candidates who, um, who show interest and have fair campaigns to the end.
Uh, councilmember Will Coxson.
So I'm curious about that. This is, since this is a discussion, um, if we went backwards in time, then uh, that argument could be made that Desiree Simmons would have the second position in Ward Three because she had the second highest vote in that election. So seems like there's cognitive dissonance about that. So is, is, and, and I, in my opinion is that these are completely separate things. Um, the election is one thing and speculating about what would happen if, if, uh, Mayor Richardson wasn't on the ballot is speculation, you know, lots of different things could have happened.
You're right. It is speculation, however, council made a decision regardless of her being a second wo- war, uh, what the second vote getter, we still have the decision to make regardless that he is the lead vote getter after. So we still have the same decision. It's still in councils.
Sure, sure.
Any further questions or comment from Mr. Barr? Go ahead.
Right. If, if I could just add something to this, kind of stir the pot a little bit more. When this came up, when the mayor resigned some time ago, at the county, the city clerk and I discussed the matter and we thought, well, you can't run as a partisan, but you could run as an independent. And so I think there were a number of people that if they could, would have run, but they, it became a determination to the state and the county that independents couldn't run for different reasons. And so i- it's really a confusing situation now, and I don't know if I'd say fair, but fairness really hasn't played a part in this whole thing. It's been very unusual. It should, I think should, should be corrected. But, uh, the charter does say that in regard to appointment, council sets its own rules.
Any further discussion? Councilmembers Will Coxson.
So then at this point, do we, um, since this moved up in the agenda, do we set that, um, that process now? Do we have to wait until the thirteenth, when it's vacated? Or, you know, do we make that motion now or do we make a motion later in this meeting? On, on how we're gonna go with the person.
Councilmember Will Coxson, I might add, we don't know if that seat will be vacant yet.
Right, so we have until the thirteenth.
Right, I, I, to make a motion now, I think would be, uh, a bit early because we don't know the mayor's intent.
Gotcha.
Well, I, I can tell you that I had a conversation with the mayor's attorney and he said that the mayor doesn't intend to vaca- to not accept the First Ward seat. I have not heard that from the mayor, but that was her attorney.
So is it, is it, is it, is it possible to move forward with the meeting without this being rectified?
Yes, uh, there's nothing in the charter that says when the, um, city, the new council is sworn in. It does say when the term starts and the term starts the first Monday after the election. But again, there's this ten-day situation and the people elected have ten days to decide whether to accept the position or not.
Can we make a motion to swear in those who are already duly elected without any conflict? Okay, well, I make a motion to move to swear those in who don't have a conflict of interest, like councilmember Will Coxson and Annie Somerville.
Councilmember Morgan, that's, that is the, the next item on the agenda is inauguration ceremony and oath.
Awesome. We're right there then. Good. I just wanted to move forward.
Okay. I was just waiting for everybody to be able to have all of their, um, their say and get their questions answered. Uh, clerk, would you move us to the next? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Jones Chance.
And I'm sorry, this, but for, I, I did want to say that for what it's worth, I, I do think it is more fair to have a uh, process and not simply reappoint me if, if that was on the table.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Clerk Kalanga, would you take us on, in the agenda, please?
Yes, Mayor. The, the next item on the a- agenda is the inauguration ceremony and oath of office and we'll go in order of Ward. So for Ward One, um, the, uh, individual elected was yourself mayor and I'm assuming that you would like to postpone the oath of office?
Uh, I will not be taking that, um, that oath. I will, I am, uh, electing to remain as mayor.
Okay, so we'll move on to the Ward Two seats. Um, councilmember-elect, uh, Will Coxson, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, it's your name.
I, Steve Wilcox.
Hereby accept the office of city councilmember Ward Two.
Hereby accept the office of city councilmember Ward Two.
And further?
And further?
I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will enforce the laws of the United States.
And that I will enforce the laws of the United States.
The State of Michigan.
The State of Michigan.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the said office.
Of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Hey, Steve.
All right, for Ward Three, uh, councilmember-elect Annie Somerville. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Annie Somerville.
Hereby accept the office.
Hereby accept the office.
Of city councilmember Ward Three.
Of city councilmember Ward Three.
And further?
And further.
I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly, solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will enforce the laws of the United States.
And that I will enforce the laws of the United States.
The State of Michigan.
The State of Michigan.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully, faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilmember Somerville.
Congrats. I'm officially an elected official.
Yes, 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 yes. Um, and, um, that will be part of my remarks later. Thank you. Okay, uh, Clerk Kalanga, please continue.
So Mayor, the next item on the agenda was the seating of the new council. Since we're on Zoom and we're seated, we'll go on to the next, which is we'll do a roll call for the new council. And, um, prior to doing that, Mr. Barr, am I to assume that, um, councilmember Jones Chance should be read into this role as well?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Somerville?
Present.
Mayor Richardson?
Present.
Councilmember Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Simmons?
Present.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Present.
Councilmember Will Coxson? All present, there is a quorum. And now council, the next, um, item on the agenda is public comments. So I'll switch over to the attendees page. Um, and if you'd like to make, uh, comment, please raise your hand and I'll call, call you in the order that your hand was raised. Counsel, it, it doesn't appear that anyone is raising their hand. Would you like me to wait a few moments longer prior to moving on?
Uh, let's give a couple of minutes, a minute or so.
There is an individual with their hand raised, Valerie Brown Tucson. Allow them to speak now. Uh, to unmute yourself and you have three minutes to make comments.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to, or Mr., uh, Chance. I want to congratulate Mr. Chance for saying that he would rather be elected to a position as councilperson rather than appointed. Hats off to you, a, 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 a young man for that brave decision. Now, when it come down to the position of mayor, uh, in my opinion, Lois Richardson has made the blunder of the ages by accepting a mayor's position for the City of Ypsilanti. She and I have talked about these kind of things over the years about Ward One seats. And this is a big blunder. I think she would be better served. She would be, and she knows she would be better served as a councilperson other than mayor. Because being a council gives her more power in her ward and she can be productive in her ward. And it also would leaks out into other wards, her productiveness. So I think she made the blunder of the ages, wanting to be mayor. You got to taste the mayor for a little bit and you, I'm sure you see how productive you not gonna be. So I think the blunder is with you. You would be better served as a councilperson in Ward One that we may go forward in the city. Because being mayor, I've been hanging around here since eighty-six. Being mayor is not a easy position. Especially if, especially if you aren't geared with the gears that it take to shift you to another, uh, 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 level. So I think the blunder has been made and you shouldn't have made it, Lois. And you don't have to say thanks. It's okay.
Didn't realize you were through, Mr. Tucson. Thank you very much for your comments and, um, we will talk as we always do. Thank you. All right. Are there any other hands raised?
Uh, yes, uh, the next individual with their hand raised is Jimmy Wilson, Jr. Allow them to speak now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I just wanted to make a quick comment to say that Lois, I think you did make a great decision. And I'm surprised to hear somebody who's been representing the NAACP and Ypsilanti area for so long, but he doesn't want to see a black mayor in Ypsilanti. So I just want to say you made a great decision and we got your back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
Um, council, the next individual with their hand raised is Karan Games. Allow them to speak now.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Mr. Gaines.
Hello. First want to say congratulations, Mayor and, uh, uh, the council members. Uh, congrats, Annie, uh, being elected. You know, that's a big step. Um, I think the most important thing out of this whole situation is I haven't once really heard nobody mention the people. And it's, that's once again, the most important thing getting overlooked. And we have to take accountability into something if Lois wasn't on the ballot, it would have been a different situation. So to overlook that and say two hundred and six people went unvoted independently, doesn't matter, they vote, don't count. And it's just disregard that, that's very disrespectful. It's a lot of people and not just myself that's very confused during the whole process. And it's just like to disregard the people and that not being the main topic of today. Yeah, that's just, that's crazy to me. That doesn't make any sense to me or nobody. Even other people on the, of the township, it didn't make sense to anybody and there was no transparency nowhere far as leadership from the mayor role on educating the people on what's going on, whether something was yea or nay. It took all the way up until today just now to finally say, yes, I'm gonna remain mayor. You got thousands of people that believe in you, that love you. We supporting a black woman. We, we, we thankful to have you, but that wasn't right. I don't believe that was right or ethical. You know, so congrats. Um, but far as leadership, that, that was a move that I don't think nobody agreed with, but I'm not here to bash you. Uh, once again, it's about the people. It's bigger than me. It's bigger than the other, uh, king sitting in the seat, Brian Jones Chance. It's bigger than everybody. We keep overlooking the people and every time they see him to talk, we're not listening. And that's all I had. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gaines, for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Marvin Redman. Allow them to speak now.
Uh, yes. I like, uh, congrats to new mayor on her position. And my prayers is over her for leadership of this, this city that I've grown to love since I've been a resident and a business owner in. So I understand that what comes with leadership as far as a business owner, what I learned was the most important uh, aspect that supports me is my actual support team. Just like in any business, it's the person that greets you when you come into the door that really sets the tone for uh, the success of your business. So that's what the previous, uh, uh, person, the add-on to what he was commenting on is about the people. And the people need to come together, we need a person that galvanizes the people. And that we can really just, just come together in these times, just like this, it's crazy. Twenty twenty has been probably the craziest years that anybody has ever seen, young or old. So this is, this is the year that actually bridges the gap. Cause we all have seen a new struggle that we all had to deal with it to the best we know how. And with that said, uh, I, I wonder about like your team, like who, who's the mayor pro temp? Like the position you vacated, who's coming up to fill that void? Because it's always about, about the team. When you think about a Trump, you gotta see, okay, what Pence doing? When you think about Biden, you got, okay, what's, what's, what's Kamala Harris? You know, so. And I like to recommend a person that I feel has, has served Ypsilanti for so many years. And it goes unsung on so many levels is Councilmember Anthony Morgan. So I would like to really just, just throw my hat in the bed like congratulations on your new, new position, but I'd like to say I would like to see Councilman Anthony Morgan as the mayor pro temp.
Is that it, Mr. Redman?
Yeah, that, that's all I would like to say.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Thank you.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is M. Jim Townsend. Allow them to speak now.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I just wanted to say congratulations to Mayor Richardson as a business owner in this area. Um, I believe she brings a lot to the table. And I find it very interesting that one would question her qualifications when she has served on council for over fifteen years. And even in this role, she has done a lot within the last couple of months with trying to bring this city together and also keeping this city safe. So rather than focus on individual, um, I don't know how to, individual thoughts about who should be mayor. What the city needs to do is rally together to push the city forward. And so I would encourage you, uh, to keep that in perspective. And when you are working together as a council and with the mayor, that is putting the people first. So, um, that's all I have to say tonight. Congratulations, Mayor Richardson. And whatever I can do to support you going forward, please feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Townsend.
Uh, Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Neary, Neary Sassenhood. Allow them to speak now.
Hi, I'd like to start off by saying, um, a huge congratulations to Mayor Lois Richardson. I did hear it said earlier, um, I heard a person who stated as if they were, uh, personal with her. And I heard them call her, uh, by the name Lois, uh, while at the same time disrespecting her, which was very disrespectful. And I'd just like to congratulate you, first of all, on becoming the mayor of Ypsilanti. Um, I also like to congratulate the way that you moved as you, uh, as you did this with, uh, not knowing how things were gonna go. We know that it's important to sit back and take a moment and be wise. So the way that you moved as far as this, um, I would like to debunk that thought that it was unethical. That was not an unethical move considering, um, everything that was happening. Those who had watched the way that things were proceeding, they would have known that, uh, there needed to be a, um, a moment where we stepped back and just watched how things were going to proceed. But, um, I just wanted to congratulate you. And I, and I want to encourage everybody that's listening and everyone that's a part of this, what this, uh, country needs, what the state needs, what the city needs right now is for people to rally behind our leaders and not stand against them. We're done with that. That went out of the door. And so now it's important, those of you all that care about the city of Ypsilanti as I do, we need to rally behind the mayor and we need to figure out how we're going to move forward in a successful manner that's good for Ypsilanti. Fighting, uh, fighting the people that are in charge, that's not a good idea. So let's just move forward as a city, let's move forward as a people. Uh, Mayor Lois Richardson, we're looking forward to, uh, all of the great things that you're gonna do as you've been on this battlefield longer than most. Um, and you deserve this position, uh, more than anyone else. And so we're looking forward to you. Congratulations, congratulations to everyone else that, um, that was elected as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hood.
Council, the next individual with their hand name is Ricky Jefferson. Allow them to speak now.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Good evening, you all who have just been reelected, congratulations. And the thing that I just wanted to speak on was, uh, the Ward One representative. And with Mayor, as Mayor Richardson being mayor, and then we have to choose the representative. Now, I just got on the, uh, the meeting, I hadn't been on to hear a lot of things that's going on. But this is something that I thought about when I saw it on the agenda about appointing someone for Ward One. The residents of Ward One, uh, you know, I'm familiar with it, that's where I was raised and born. And so was my mother. Are the ones that elect their representatives, not appointed. They let a four-year term election. So if you appoint a four-year person for four years in that term, you're doing a disservice to the Ward One residents. You know, you have options, I don't know what your legal options are. But to take that out of their hands and leave it to the council is something I wouldn't do if I was on council. I, I just wouldn't do it. Because that seat is meant for representation by the people. So whatever you do, you can do a two-year split, appoint somebody for two years and then another person the next two years. But an election would be what's called for, for representation of Ward One, uh, council member. Thank you. And to all of you, uh, who are serving, continue to do the best that you can. And I respect each and every one of you looking forward to working with. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jefferson.
Council, the next individual with their hand up is Mary Hall Fium. Allow them to speak now.
Good afternoon, uh, good evening. And congratulations, Mayor Richardson, on your decision. I am calling tonight, uh, at this meeting as a part of the Statutory Vice Chair of the Washington Democratic Party and also as a Vice Chair for Statewide Engagement for the Ann Arbor Dems. And I just want to say congratulations to your cross um, divide efforts of working with all of the communities surrounding Ypsilanti and welcoming us to your city. So congratulations to you and to all who took office tonight. Um, a wonderful opportunity and we hope to stay engaged with your community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hall Fium. Appreciate that time. Thank you.
Oh, Cham, it's Cham.
Cham, sorry about. I know that, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. Please forgive me.
Not a problem.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Guy Conti. Allow them to speak now.
Good evening, Council and those people from the city of Ypsilanti who are attending tonight. My name is Guy Conti. I live in Superior Township, but I have roots in the city of Ypsilanti. As most of you may know, I do represent, uh, Mayor Richardson, but I am not speaking tonight uh, as her attorney, just to be clear. I did want to speak to you though about, uh, my, my pleasure for the people of the city of Ypsilanti in that, uh, Ms., Reverend Richardson has decided uh, to continue as mayor. If we've learned anything over the last four years is that the first thing you want in a chief executive of a, of a city, a state, or a nation is a person of quality. And I have known few people of better quality than Lois Richardson. Uh, Reverend Richardson is, is a woman of faith. She is a civil person. She listens. She has her own opinions. That's for sure, don't we all? Uh, but I know that she respects each and every one of the council members and, and has a great and abiding love for the people of the city of Ypsilanti. I would tell you straight out that under the conditions I've represented her, I would never have done so if I didn't believe what I'm telling you and what I'm saying. I believe that this council and this city is extraordinarily fortunate uh, to have Mayor Richardson, uh, as, as their first, uh, female African-American mayor. But you know what? Again, it comes down to quality of the person. And you are extremely fortunate to have Mayor Richardson as your mayor because she is a wonderful person. Congratulations, Mayor Richardson. Uh, and good luck and Godspeed to the city of Ypsilanti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conti. I appreciate that. Clerk Kalanga, are there any other hands?
Uh, not currently, Mayor. Doesn't, uh, oh. So, raise their hand if they have already spoken. So if Council wishes, we can move on to the, the next agenda item.
If there are no more hands, yes. I would just like to say thank you to everyone that, um, did participate in audience participation. We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay, Council, moving on to the next section of the agenda, resolutions, motions, and discussions. The first resolution under that is Resolution Number twenty twenty dash two-two-nine, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that this Ypsilanti City Council adopts Robert's Rules of Order tenth edition as the official rules of order for procedures of the Ypsilanti City Council meetings. For the purpose of council rules, each separate meeting of city council shall constitute a session as that term is used in Robert's Rules of Order. A motion for reconsideration of a motion may be made and considered at the same session or in the next immediate session. A motion be made, excuse me, a motion may be amended by a friendly amendment if both the members making the motion and the members supporting, seconding the motion agree.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Is that a question? Um, uh, thank you and congratulations, Mayor, Mayor Richardson. Um, I had a question, why we're not using the eleventh edition? There's a new edition, I'm just curiosity. Cause we all have the tenth and it's easier that way?
Mr. Barr?
Well, yes. When this resolution was prepared a year or so ago, uh, the tenth was the latest edition. You can amend it to make it the eleventh edition, but there's really not that much difference in the two editions for our purpose. And it would be less expensive to continue to use the tenth edition.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Simmons, I can't see you. Did you have any comments or questions?
No, sorry, I'm having video problems tonight, but no, I'm good.
Okay. It's okay. All right, uh, Clerk Kalanga, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next resolution. Resolution number twenty twenty dash two-three-zero, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti. That regular council meeting shall be held on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. When a council meeting falls on a holiday or an election day, the next day after the holiday or election day will be the meeting day for the regular meeting, except when council designates another day. Such a change will get be given public notice. Further, that all regular meetings of the Ypsilanti City Council shall be held at seven PM in the City Council chambers located at One South Huron Street. Except when the council designates another time and location, such a change will be given public notice. Further, that all council meetings end by ten PM unless council agrees by majority vote to extend the deadline.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Support.
Been moved and supported, discussion?
This as a, as a point of contention. It says that we, they end at ten PM unless we all agree unanimously to continue to extend. If we don't do that, does that mean business ends that day? Abruptly, we just leave business on the floor and take it up the next council meeting? Okay.
That's been my understanding over the years. And, uh, Clerk Kalanga, you read something that I don't know that I'd ever, that it has to be a, an anonymous, a unanimous, um, vote to extend the meeting? Did I hear you say that?
Um, correct, this is, this is the same resolution that Council has, uh, passed for the, the previous two organizational meetings in twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen.
Okay.
This has been the rules of council for some time now.
It's not unanimous, it's majority vote.
Majority.
Did I read unanimously?
I said unanimous, that's my fault.
I, I do apologize, I misread that it is majority vote.
Okay, that's what I was saying, I'd never heard that before. Okay, right. Glad we got that cleared up. So, okay.
That's all I had.
Any other discussion about this?
I have a quick thing to add.
Yes.
I've thought about this off and on. I'm kind of curious why our meetings don't start at six o'clock? Because I feel like at least a quarter, almost a half of the year, we have to move our meetings to six o'clock because we have like special stuff on the agenda. Um, has that ever been discussed before? Does anybody have any interest in changing it? Is there a reason why it's at seven?
Um, if I may answer that, uh, Councilmember Somerville, when I first came on council, meetings, our meeting time was seven thirty to eleven. And I believe it was under Mayor Edmonds that council voted to change the time from set to seven to ten. So, um, council, this is, we're setting our time, whatever council wishes. Now, I would say that I did discuss with, um, Clerk Kalanga today in talking with a couple of other, uh, municipalities. I know Westland does it, and I believe, I'm not sure exactly how, um, Pittsfield does theirs. But Westland, they have, uh, I know also Inkster. They have, if they have a, an item on the agenda that's They have, if they have an item on the agenda that's going to require much discussion, a lot of discussion, they will have a work session at 6 o'clock and they will take up that item there so that it is not discussed in the overall meeting, so that the overall meeting isn't extended. I think we have been leaving those items on our agenda to discuss during the regular time. And that was something that I was saying to him today. I would really like for this council to consider, and I didn't know if this was the exact place to bring it up or not. There was another spot also where it could come up, but I would like to see us when we have items that are going to require extended discussion to have a work session before the start of the regular meeting. But the regular meeting time, the days are all, that's all up to council, so. Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Thank you. I know that typically I work until 6:00. So moving it to 6 o'clock, you know, and when we're meeting in person, and I know that Councilmember Simmons also had a hard time getting from physical work to council on those nights where it was at 6 o'clock. And I think even what Mayor Richardson was saying in terms of, you know, having those special meetings and starting them earlier. I'm not sure, I mean, we've done that in the past, right? We've had either the closed meetings, but we've also had, you know, just moved the agenda up an hour. And I don't know if that's what you're talking about, or if having a separate meeting from 6 to 7:00 and then a meeting from 7 to 10:00. But, you know, and I wonder about our constituents in terms of how many of them are dealing with kids, feeding, you know, getting dinner for families and things like that and are able to to tune in at 6 o'clock or to make it to the chambers if we ever get back to doing that. So that's my concern about moving it up permanently to that position.
And that was always a part of the discussion in having the meeting start at 7:00 and, or even moving it to 7:00 from 7:30. So I understand, I agree with you that many people are just getting home and 6 o'clock is dinner time. So that was why it would only be, you know, my suggestion is it would only be a work session when we absolutely needed, you know, to do that. But certainly, we do have to consider our residents and their ability to join us, so.
Mayor Richardson.
That makes sense. Councilmember, yeah. Excuse me. Okay, yes, Councilmember.
Oh, sorry, it was Jennifer. I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm the video issue.
I'm coming to you, Councilmember Brown. I'm coming to you.
I was just going to quickly say, I mean, now that I'm working from home during the pandemic, I could do earlier. It is harder when I'm physically working in the office. But my other consideration would be our city staff who often work a full day and just allowing them the opportunity to go home or, you know, get a meal before they come back. You know, I don't know if that's a factor, but I guess if we were going to change the time, I would want to make sure that that was something that also, you know, worked for them as well, and including our citizens, who I think that the 7:00 PM time might work better as well. So thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Yes, I was just going to add the same. I think, I actually do like the idea of having work sessions at 6:00. For me personally, though, it is difficult to get to chambers when we're in person. When I'm leaving work, I've struggled with that throughout my two terms in this position. But I do think that we should continue on as we've been doing, when we know that we have topics to be discussed, to just schedule those meetings and then adequately notice them so that individuals know that we're going to meet earlier rather than just moving the meeting every time to 6:00 PM so that we can accommodate, you know, not only council, but, you know, our constituents and families taking care of things.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Jones Chance?
Could the per-meeting load be lightened and is this even allowable for us to, if we switch to bi-weekly meetings instead of twice monthly meetings? For example, in December, they could give us an extra, one extra meeting in a month?
I think that would mess up the schedule for boards and commissions.
Currently, right now, we do take advantage of the extra meetings that we have. And we do that trying to consider hot topics, you know, that we need time to discuss where we need a work session. Generally, we've been using, you know, the Tuesday date for that. Like, sometimes we'll have a Water Street, you know, presentation or update, and we know that's going to take a long time. So we've been using like the off Tuesdays and the extra Tuesdays for those kinds of things. And then also when we're setting the agenda, if there is something that seems to be difficult or that will probably spark a lot of discussion and council isn't sure on it, we will start the meeting at 6 o'clock. And so we just don't do it like on a regular basis. But we do put our heads together, the clerk and myself and the mayor, and we kind of say, well, you know, that's coming, so let's put, let's start at 6 o'clock to allow an hour for us to talk about it. Now, that hour usually doesn't have the public there. The public usually comes at the regular 7 o'clock hour. So we've been trying to do something like that, but just not formal. It hasn't been a formal, you know, part of our operations.
So counsel, if I might add, adding a third Tuesday in December would go into our break and it would be next to impossible to get any of items for that agenda.
Yeah, that was mostly just an example of where we could get an extra weekend, but I think it makes sense the way the city manager described it. They're already being used essentially.
Okay, so do we have? Have we made known exactly when we know the days that we're going to meet? Have we made known the times that we, are we settled on 7 to 10:00 for our meetings?
Yeah, that's totally fine. I only ask just because sometimes we move them. People get confused.
Could we have a motion to that effect, please?
Mayor, the motion as is, is how the resolution was read, so there was no need for an amendment.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously?
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Morgan, for allowing us to see your cutie pie. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you. Clerk, we can move on, please.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Council Resolution Number 2020-231, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, that the procedure for transaction of business shall be that business raised by at least one council member, supported by a second council member. Under council-proposed business, be referred to the next regular meeting for transaction. This procedure may be weighed by the consent of two-thirds vote of council.
Is there a motion? Councilmember Wilcoxen, is there a second?
Support.
Okay, supported by Councilmember Brown. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. Councilmember Wilcoxen, was your hand up?
I was just curious if we'd ever gone the two-thirds route. I mean, I'm assuming two-thirds means that we address it right then at that time, right?
Clerk Kalenga, could you answer that, please?
Yes, my understanding that is what that would mean.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Councilmember Simmons, I'm not seeing you. Do you have anything for this resolution? Okay, not hearing anything. Okay, would you call the roll, please, clerk?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah.
Councilmember Simmons, or Somerville, rather?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next resolution. Resolution 2020-232, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, that Washtenaw County Legal News be designated as the official newspaper of the city of Ypsilanti for placement of all required publication notices and display advertisement.
I'll move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion? Questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
What are our other options? I mean, we go through this each time too, but, you know, I've listened to this conversation a number of times, but it's like, you know, I don't know where to find that. I mean, I could find it online, I suppose, but still.
The newspaper record is, is years ago, we, the clerk department did a cost analysis. We reviewed a few papers and this is, this is after the Courier went out of, out of business. And this is just to fulfill the state statute. However, it's, it's, most of the notices that get to the public are going to be through social media and the website. So just, this just fulfills that requirement. And this, this is used by several of the jurisdictions located in Washtenaw County.
Can I ask where they're based at?
I'm sorry?
Where are they based at?
Where are they based at? I believe Ann Arbor uses this, Ypsilanti Township. If I'm not mistaken, Pittsfield Township. I'm not certain we're superior, but those are the ones that are closest to us that use this paper.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I like to bring clarification. Councilmember Morgan, this is because there's not very many newspapers that print, actually print.
I agree with it. Mr. and echo, the almighty echo. Remember the heritage? There's a couple bloggers, you know, just want to keep it open.
Purple.
Yeah, what's left?
No, Nicole knows. We met the guy once. It's online. No, I don't think it's print, sorry.
I'd add that this is also used for foreclosure notices. And it's very common throughout the state that smaller newspapers like this be used for this purpose.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Oh, I'll just, I'll also note that the Washtenaw Legal News is available free at many county locations, the courts, the, you know, different facilities. So it's a free resource for folks.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. Any other discussion, comments? If not, Clerk Kalenga, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah.
Member Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Next.
Number 2020-233, resolved by the Ypsilanti City Council, that the council protocol for city staff shall be as follows. Council protocol for city staff. Governance of a city relies on the cooperative efforts of elected officials who set policy and city staff who analyze problems and issues, make recommendations, implement and administer the council's policies. Therefore, every effort should be made to be cooperative and show mutual respect for the contributions made by each individual for the good of the community. Conduct towards staff. Clear, honest communication that respects the abilities, experience, and dignity of each individual is expected. Poor behavior towards staff is not acceptable. Channels of communication. Questions of city staff and/or requests for additional background information should be directed only to the city manager, assistant city manager, city attorney, city clerk, or department heads. The city manager should be copied on any request to department heads. Council members should not set up meetings with department staff directly, but work through department heads who will attend any meetings with council members. When in doubt about what staff conduct or contact is appropriate, council members should ask the city manager for direction. Equal access to information. Materials and information supplied to a council member in response to a request will be made available to all members of council so that all have equal access to information. The city manager should ensure that each access is provided when appropriate. Public criticism of employees. Counselors should never express concerns about the performance of a city employee in public to the employee directly or to the employee's manager. Comments about staff performance should only be made to the city manager through private correspondence or conversation. Involvement in administrative functions. Do not involve in administrative functions. Council members must not attempt to influence city staff on the making of appointments, awarding of contracts, selecting of consultants, processing of development applications, or granting of city licenses and permits. Staff meetings. Do not attend staff meetings unless requested by staff. Even if the council member does not say anything, the council member's presence may imply support, show partiality, intimidate staff, or hamper staff ability to do its job objectively. Request for staff support. It shall require two members of council to request staff support through the city manager, who is responsible for allocating city resources in order to maintain a professional, well-run city government. It is up to the city manager to ensure that staff resources are allocated in accordance with overall council priorities. Research or preparation of material by the city attorney may be requested directly by the mayor or two council members. Response to citizen complaints. Depend upon the staff to respond to citizen complaints and concerns. It is the role of council members to pass on concerns and complaints on behalf of their constituents. It is not, however, appropriate to pressure staff to solve a problem in a particular way. Refer citizen complaints to the city manager, who will follow up with appropriate staff. The staff should respond to all approved requests for information in an agreed-upon timeframe. It is appropriate for council members to follow up with the manager to determine how the concerns were resolved.
I'll move.
Been moved and supported. Discussion? Questions?
Who, I'm sorry, who was the support of?
The support was, I believe, Councilmember Brown. Was it you that I heard?
I think it was Simmons. It was Simmons.
Simmons.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Nobody?
Okay. Your hand up, Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes, it is. I was waiting to see if anybody else, but apparently not. This is an interesting set of language. In the past, there's been some confusion about what council has adopted and actions that staff should, staff has taken. You know, maybe that was naivety on council's part or just miscommunication or just confusion. But what I'd like to see happen is, is when we get done with proposals and those kinds of things, to have a summary of what the action items are. And I don't know how we incorporate that in here, but it just came up here that there have been a number of times that things have happened and I was like, you know, I didn't realize. I thought there was something else happening. And so I'd like to have a summary of that. You know, when there's a policy made, exactly what the roles are going to be in terms of what the staff action items are going to be. There's a couple places in here. There's a couple places in here where there's, uh, declarative language, um, that seems, um, kind of strange in that, you know, under involvement in the administrative functions, you know, the, you know, the administration do not get involved in administrative functions. I mean, who's saying this to the council? I mean, that, that, that's a strange voice to put something like that. And I'd, I'd like to amend that to say that council should not get involved, rather than having that directive, because it's not clear who's giving that directive.
Councilmember Wilcoxen, this is council's resolution. Council is giving that directive to.
So I'd like, I'd like to make an amendment to, in two places, to, to, um, alter under involvement in administrative functions, uh, to change it from saying, do not get involved in administrative functions, to council should not get involved in administrative functions. And also in attendance of staff meetings, that change it from do not attend staff meetings to council should not attend staff meetings.
Councilmember Brown?
Um, so though I do, I understand what you're saying, councilmember Wilcoxen, but I, I remember being involved when this language was created. And it was because the ambiguity for council members that, um, like, for instance, in attendance at staff meetings, and when it said before, you should not, there were council members who, who said, oh, I should not, but that doesn't mean that I, I cannot. And what we want is to remove that pressure from staff, or, or staff, from council members infringing upon their meetings and the things that they're doing. And I'm not saying that any of us are going to do that, but that has happened in the past, and that has been a thing, and that's how this came to be in both of those areas. Um, and council members using the language as a way to circumvent what we're asking ourselves to do. So this was a way to, um, honestly, you know, give clear direction and delineation to council so that we do not see that happening, um, and that staff are able to provide the functions that they are there to provide, and that we are not infringing upon their work.
I, I understand that, but the, uh, the, the use of the word should, I can be interpreted as a guideline rather than a, a directive. So this is a directive from council to council.
Correct. This was council's language that we came up with, um, to alleviate some of the problems that we had seen, even before my, honestly, even before my time.
Yeah.
Uh, councilmember Simmons?
Could I suggest the word shall? You know, in, in legalese, that, that means do not. And it's a little bit maybe more palatable, I don't know, easier on the ear than, um, than the do not, and a little clearer than the should. So that might be my suggestion.
Okay. Councilmember Wilcoxen, you were making the amendment. Are you willing to, um, I mean, you were making the motion, but we, that did not go second, but you brought up the discussion. Would you be open to councilmember Simmons's shall instead of should?
Yes, I think that clears up the thing. It doesn't have the, um, the finger wagging.
Okay. So would one of you please put that in a motion, and the other second?
I move to change the language in involvement in administrative functions to council shall not get involved in administrative functions. Um, and in attendance at staff meetings, council shall not attend staff meetings.
Support.
It's moved and supported as the amendment to the resolution as read. Councilmember, I mean, I'm sorry, Clerk Colinga, would you please call the roll?
Oh, wait, I have a quick question.
Oh, you do? Okay. Didn't see your hand yet.
No, that's okay. Um, I just have a quick question for the city manager. Um, do you, has this been functioning pretty well from your perspective?
I would say, uh, yes. As far as attending staff meetings, as far as I am aware, I have not received any complaints from department heads. And the other part, it was shall not attend department head, the staff meetings, and what was the other one?
Administrative function.
Now, that one has been fuzzy. Um, administrative functions. I try to head it off. Most of the department heads will let me know. So, um, I think we do need to put something there. Yeah. The administrative functions part has been, uh, a little on the gray side. Councilmember Brown?
So, um, city manager, are you asking that there's stronger language, like, stronger language for the administrative functions? Or can you clarify for me? I'm, I just want to understand.
Yeah, I, I think the wording that has been proposed, shall not, is, is fine. It's up to council to actually comply. Um, and the way to comply with that is already in these procedures, is to CC me, and it's also to come through me. And so I believe that if council gets that, you know, gets that portion, we shouldn't have a problem, um, with this. But unfortunately, those things have been skipped most of the time, and the department head will, um, refer back to me on what they should do. And we don't want to have to do that. We don't want to put staff in the middle, you know, to feel that they're not obeying a council person or ignoring a council person or something like that. Councilmember, uh, Morgan?
I, I know, uh, when, when it comes to the language, um, of, uh, well, first, I, I, I think, is there a consequence to us doing these things? If we do what we shouldn't do, shall not do, or don't do, whatever the language is, is there a consequence to that if we was to, uh, offend that? And that language enough should be a deterrent. So is, is there clear language in that if we were to violate? Because if you say, don't do it, shall not do it, that means there's a consequence to it. So what is the consequence?
Mr. Burr?
Formal complaint?
Yes, um, this discussion comes about because of the way the charter is set up. And when a person is elected to city council or to the office of mayor, that is a high honor, and a certain amount of power goes with that election or appointment. However, the charter says that all of the power of the city is vested in the city council. And the result of that is that individually, individual city council members or the mayor individually have no added power to anyone else in the city, except when they're sitting on the dais and they're acting as city, as a member of city council, then they have all of the power. And when it, and the city charter gives council as a body that power, but not the individual members. And in the far distant past, the city has had some severe problems when one or more council members drill down into the departments, and particularly the police department, and we get unnecessary problems and difficulty from that when the city council members act as though they have authority. And so this resolution was developed by city council some years ago, I'm not sure, a number of years ago, to try to, first of all, remind council of what their responsibility is, and secondly, to avoid those issues. Now, the question is, what if we have a rogue member who goes around ordering department heads or city employees to do or not do things, or to give special favors, or something like that? Well, there are two remedies. One is in the ethics ordinance. And the other is the fact the city council makes its own rules, and it judges its own members. And so in the past, we have had one or more city council members who needed counseling, or I guess some education as to what their proper rem, uh, role was. And if it would continue, so the council has the ability to, uh, first of all, uh, chastise the person by a vote of no confidence, or by a vote of censure, and in an extreme case, they could ask the mayor to remove the person. I'm sorry. Not the mayor, the governor.
Governor. Councilmember Brown, thank you, Mr. Burr.
Thank you, Mr. Burr. Um, although I, you know, I understand the, the want to make the language more palatable, um, I'm not going to support the amendment because I just feel like do not is as direct as it can get. Um, and if I'm hearing the city manager correctly, we are, we already have, um, individuals, at least in the administrative functions, who are circumventing what this language says. And I just think honestly, we're adults. Do not means do not, and I don't necessarily think it needs to be palatable to feel good. It needs to be direct and clear so that we know what our, our expectations are. So just for public record, I will not be supporting the amendment.
Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, uh, clerk, would you please call the, the roll?
Okay, on the amendment of resolution twenty twenty dash two three three, councilmember Jones Chance?
No.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Somerville?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion fails with two yes votes and five no votes.
Thank you.
Council, there's not any further, further, uh, discussion? I can move on to the resolution as is?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Um, I did have further comments.
Oh, you had further comments? Okay, I didn't see your hand, so I was looking down to read the next, see what the next resolution was.
Something was over my face. Um, with response to the, the response to citizen complaints, this past year has, has brought a, a number of complaints, that should be handled by, uh, I just want to clarify this in that if, if, uh, you know, the first line is that, that staff deals with those complaints, and that council members can bring that to the attention of staff, and put people in touch with that as a le, as a liaison, but not as an advocate, is what, what this is saying. So then, the mechanism for if, if the constituent doesn't feel like their, their issue has been resolved, then that needs to come to a council meeting in terms of that's up to the council member to determine whether staff have followed the ordinances, as written.
Generally, um, if the complainant does not agree with the resolution, it comes to me. And I usually will meet with them, or send them a letter, or review, and either uphold or not. And, um, there are times that I also refer it to Mr. Burr. Case in point, we have like the Gap case and different things like that, where we have had, um, things going back and forth for many of years, and they have not agreed with our findings. So it's landed in the city attorney's office. So that's usually how we deal with them. Staff will come to a decision. It could be to charge the fee or not. And they always have the right to, I mean, it's not appeal, appeal, but the right to, uh, come to me to, and, and staff always sends them to me. And then I will review what staff has, and I'll review what they have, and make my determination. And sometimes they're not pleased with that as well. And then, um, I usually refer them to the city attorney's office.
So then, in, um, thank you for, for that. In the case that after your determination or the, the city attorney's determination, is there a role for council to, to, um, to act there, or then does that just simply go to the court? If somebody says, you know, there's been a couple times that people have claimed that the city is not enforcing their own ordinances. So then, you know, that come, that goes through the whole process, and the person is still claiming that we don't enforce the ordinances. Then what is the recourse for that? Is there, is there a role for city council in that? Or does that then become an issue with the courts? And then they have to sue?
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Mr. Burr follow up on that, but we've had that happen a number of times where they did not agree, and they came publicly before council to express their opposition to our decision. And we always have, we always offer them the right to take up, you know, legal proceedings regarding that. I would, I would really, um, suggest that council, I mean, it would be hard for council to decide on something that has already been decided on, you know? Uh, and some, you know, in front of, you know, the public, it's like, well, staff has already said, this is the case. The manager has reviewed it and said, this is the case. And the attorney has reviewed it and said that this is the case. And so we have that going on now. And so now, we're not individually addressing, you know, the person. We're all saying the same thing, and we're all, um, referring the person back to our city attorney, who becomes our representative. And, um, I guess I'm strongly opposed, because they can come to council and say whatever, but most of the time, if it's in litigation, and, you know, um, or if they haven't received the resolution they want, usually the mayor will say, you know, the manager's gonna get in touch with you. Most of the time, I have, and they just didn't like it. And they may say, well, the manager's not calling me back. Well, what they're saying is that the manager hasn't changed her decision. And so they're coming to you to, um, basically make their appeal. I'm not sure how that looks in the public eye. Um, I'm just not sure that I want to go down that road. Um, Mr. Burr, could you offer something? Because what it did, what it looks like is that if I don't like, I mean, you can always go to council and say what you want to say.
Sure.
But I don't want them to think that they can come to council, and council will just begin to start it all over again. Because this is what we have with some of these cases. Every new council we get, they start over again. And.
I got that, yeah.
And so, you know, and so I think that it's there for a reason. And I think hopefully council has faith in the staff and in myself, and our legal team, and Mr. Burr, that, um, we are giving people their due process, and that we're doing, um, what is right. Because sometimes when they come to council, they're just talking up, out their feelings, you know? And they're saying, you know, they told me to do this, and all the facts are not there. And I'm not sure that council is equipped legally to make some of those decisions. They would refer back to, to staff and refer back to the attorney's office. Mr. Burr, go ahead.
All right, uh, this question, as well as many other questions, can be answered by a close reading of the Ypsilanti City Charter. In Michigan, we have a number of different methods and types of government for local government. In some governments, say the city of Detroit, the mayor is a strong mayor and runs the city. In other governments, like the city of Ypsilanti, we have a city manager form of government. And the theory is that the individual mayor and city council have their lives to live, and they do not, they're not involved in the city management all the time. And so it is good and proper to hire an expert to run the city. And that essentially is what the city manager form of government is. We hire a city manager many times, most of the times, on a competitive review of people that have advanced degrees, have, have a lot of experience in government. And the city council depend, the, decides on who is the best person that can run the city, recognizing that the individual council members and mayor don't have the time or inclination, and a lot of the times, the training to do it. And so the city hires a city manager. And the city charter says, then the city manager runs the city, hires and fires the staff, and, um, makes these decisions. So people don't, sometimes people don't like it. And in the event, in the situation where there's a claim And in the event, in the situation where there's a claim that the city is not enforcing its own ordinances, I can tell you that through the whole scheme of enforcement, whether it's the city staff, the city police, the city officer, police officer on the beat, there's always an amount of discretion that is involved in holding that position. And it's true, sometimes, for a lot of different reasons, we enforce an ordinance or we don't enforce the ordinance, depending on what the situation is. It's like when a police officer stops you for perhaps speeding. The officer has discretion based on the circumstances, whether to give you a ticket or not. In the particular situation that we have had in the immediate past, where there was a claim that the city was not enforcing its ordinances, that went to court. The person sued us and lost. And the person is not happy with that, and so what are their alternatives? They've talked to the manager, they've talked to the department heads, they've talked to the city attorney. And so they figure, well, what's there to lose but going to city council and asking city council to direct the manager to take some type of particular action? That is really where the rubber meets the road. And if the council doesn't like what the city manager is doing, then they get a new city manager. But the situation is because we have a charter that says "The administration of the city is vested in the office of the city manager."
Now, any questions?
There's one other thing I can say.
Okay, good.
And that is, individual council members cannot order the city manager to do anything.
Right.
But city council as a whole can order the city manager to do something.
Thank you both for the clarification. That answers my question, that the recourse for people who are not satisfied with the resolution that's presented to them is a legal recourse. And beyond that, there is no recourse. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan, I believe I saw your hand up before Mr. Barr spoke. No? You're settled?
Yes, I am, I am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Councilmember Simmons, I can't see you. Did you have anything to share with us?
No, thanks. I'm good.
All right, very good. Okay, Councilmember Jones Chance?
I just had a question for the city manager. Is the system of running things through you, is that, I guess someone asked it in a different way, but does that work for you? Because I know in the past, like, I've sort of felt guilty with all the, I mean, just my emails. And I know you're probably getting a lot more. I just wonder, like, is that, will that be able to function for you, like, going forward?
It does function well, because what it does, it lets me know what's out there. So I may not get to it before you guys have talked or whatever, but more than likely, I have a very good staff, so they will come to me. You know, if I haven't read it, because I'm CC'd on it and I haven't caught up on the email, they will let me know. So it is working very well. It's not working when I'm left out, because then I, you know, I find out, or they'll come to me, and I don't like that. And I've had that happen a lot. Well, they'll come to me and say, well, you know, such and such and such, and, you know. So I just prefer we do it the way that we should do it. But thank you for asking if that's working.
Because I get and what you might get just must be-
It's a whole lot. It is. And I'm very, as I said, again, I'm grateful to staff because we have our, we have a weekly department head meeting. So it is a time that we share. So if things have come up where they need to look at situations or council, you know, they'll talk about it. And they'll say, you know, you can CC. So we actually, not just reading it, but we talk about it. We have a conversation. And Councilmember Jones Chance, that, what you just mentioned was brought up when we, when this resolution was first written, was that it would be an added burden upon the city manager. So there's always been that concern that it would overburden city manager, so. But anyway, thank you. Thanks to everyone. Is there anyone else that has anything to, for this particular resolution? If not, Clerk Aling, would you please call the row?
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Sorry, yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Onto Resolution 2020-234. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the city council adopts the following city council boards and commissions appointment procedure. Notice that the city clerk shall provide the city council monthly a report consisting of all council appointees, their addresses, contact information, the committee or commission appointed to, and the date of expiration of their term for all appointees who term expire within the next 60 days. That the mayor or any city staff person shall notify the city council and city clerk of any vacancies or pending vacancy occurring in any committee or commission as soon as that becomes known. Notice shall be posted to the city websites, soliciting nominations for those positions mentioned above at the time of the report or notice to city council. Procedure: That any mayoral nomination for appointment shall be submitted to city council under the mayor's reports at one council meeting and held for action until the following council meeting. Nominations may now also be brought forward by two members of council and will follow the same procedure. Nomination shall include a letter of interest form and resume of the nominee. Vacancy in office, vacancy in office shall occur when the current appointee discontinues membership by death, resignation, or removal from office by not seeking reappointment in writing prior to the expiration of his or her term or not being reappointed by the appointing authority. Term of office: Members of boards and commissions of the city shall serve for the terms specifically stated in the charter or in the law or ordinance creating the office. With consent of two-thirds of the council, an appointee may continue provisionally in office after the expiration of their term of office until a successor has been elected or appointed and has qualified for the assumed duties of the office. No member of any board or commission shall be allowed to hold over four more than 60 days beyond the term of office fixed by ordinance whether or not a successor has been appointed. Qualification: Appointees to city boards and commission shall meet the affiliation qualification requirements of the city code Section 2-111 below, as well as any specific qualification required by city ordinance or state statute. Section 2-111 applicability of section: Except as otherwise specifically provided, members of boards and commissions shall be affiliated with the city. This requirement shall be fulfilled in the following ways. An individual shall have been a resident of the city for a minimum of two years. Or two, an individual shall demonstrate ownership interest for a minimum of two years in a business established in the city for a minimum of two years. B, exceptions to subsections A1 and 2 of this section shall be only permitted if it is determined by the city council that a board or commission requires the membership of an individual with a specific position, knowledge, experience, or expertise not available in another individual, who may otherwise comply with the terms of subsections A1 and 2 of this section.
For coming forth, did we hear support?
Support. Okay.
Who removed? Was it Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Any questions or discussion?
Sit at my hands. I do have a question.
Okay, Councilmember Wilcoxen. Now, to get your questions out.
There we go. I know there's a master spreadsheet with all of these positions in there. And with two council members making those, now able to make nominations, I'd like to request that that be distributed before the 60 days that's allowed for it here, so that we know who's on here now, and we can see in advance who's, you know. So if we could have that distributed once a year, or?
Well, the master list is actually a Google document. And I've already discussed this with staff, that we will add all council members to have access to that document. It is updated regularly. Also, as applications come in, once this election is certified and the two charter amendments take effect, each council member will receive by email the application or each application that has been submitted.
Great, thank you. I had another request to have. When we're notified of those nominations, when they come up in the communications and then they go to the next meeting, but on the, when they're first put on the agenda, I'd like to add that the chair of the commission also be notified, not just by the public notification, but a personal notification to the chairs of the respective commissions. Is that possible?
Yeah, that is possible. We can do that.
Andrew, Clerk Alinga, is it possible that city council can give final approval to the new process, you know, which would include all of these things that are being said so that in case they have some additions, you know, it can be discussed, like, it come to council? Because now, since it can, the nominations can take place in a different way, maybe we should formalize it and let them, you know, approve the process?
Yeah, that, absolutely. I can bring a resolution forward. I might not be able to get one for tomorrow's meeting, but definitely on the 17th, I can have something.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan?
I don't want to, we're not asking for fitness screens or mental aptitude tests, but I do think background checks are in order. I'm not asking for us to do drug screens or anything to that nature. However, I think some people have had questionable actions, and I'm not talking about people's past or negative life, but it could reflect on us negatively if we don't properly, probably, because of being, we have to have a criminal background checks in some respect, because that was the contention of some of the things that leads to people not, will be disqualified from our seats. So I think we should have that continuation with the people who are in our circumference, who do, who do in city business or work in conjunction. Now, I'm not trying to demify or single out people, but I do think-
That might be a violation of the-
The non-discrimination ordinance?
To do a background check?
We could do background checks, but then if we find anything, we can't actually not nominate someone based on that background check.
Really?
Yeah, that would be a violation of the NDO.
Okay. Wow. Do a background check on me? Wow, that's, I don't know. Okay, that's it. I digress.
Thank you, Councilmember Morgan. Any other questions, discussion? All right, seeing none. Clerk Alinga, could you call the row, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Resolution Number 2020-235. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti. The Ypsilanti City Council will hold regular meetings at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers located at One South Huron Street, Ypsilanti, Michigan, 48197 for the year of 2021 on the following dates: January 5th, January 26th, following holiday, February 2, February 16, March 2, March 16, April 6, April 20th, May 4th, May 18, June 1, June 15, July 13, following a holiday, July 20th, August 3, August 17th, September 14th, following holiday, September 21st, October 5, October 19th, November 2, November 16th, December 7, December 21st. The Ypsilanti, the City of Ypsilanti encourages persons with disabilities to participate and will provide necessary reasonable auxiliary aids and services such as sign for the hearing impaired, limited English proficiency services, and audios of printed materials being considered at the meeting to individuals with disabilities upon two days' notice to the city. Individuals with disabilities requiring auxiliary aids or services should contact the city by writing or calling the following: City Clerk's Office, One South Huron Street, Ypsilanti, Michigan, 48197-5420-734483-1100. All persons are welcome to attend. Additional information may be obtained at the City Clerk's Office, and written comments may be sent to the City Clerk's Office at the above listed address.
Your support?
Support.
Been moved in support of. Discussion, comments, questions? Councilmember Brown?
Does this, do these days include the normal summer break that we take? Or are we to remove a day for that?
You would have to remove a day for that.
So just putting it out there that we've typically removed the date, I believe, in June for a short summer break for council. It's not required, but typically has been done. So just, you know, process.
I remember it being more in July rather than-
Maybe July. I'm sorry, June or July?
I thought it was August, so.
I thought it was August, too.
I think it's August, because I remember when I first got appointed. I got appointed in June, and then we pretty much didn't meet in August.
So maybe, I think we choose every year, honestly, and I think it's been different each time.
Yeah.
But somewhere in the summer, we typically take some type of break.
I always have remembered it being pretty much in July, that it flows. And actually, the me, the way the meet Tuesdays flow, we do get some extra days in August, so. But it's up to council, what you would like.
Second meeting in July, then, Mayor. I think that we get the extra break. I don't, but either way.
Go ahead, Councilmember Somerville.
I'm cool with either. Does anybody have strong feelings about July or August?
I mean, I probably prefer August, but I'm open.
We do in August or July or August, whichever. I would like to suggest that we do it where it also takes us into where we would already have a meeting, extra meeting, no meeting day, if you understand what I'm saying. So say if we miss the second meeting in August, is there a fourth Tuesday or fifth Tuesday there, so? Or if it's in July, because some calendars, sometimes it happens that way, if you understand what I'm saying.
It looks like August is the month that has five Tuesdays. So.
So I think that's what we did. Somehow or other, it worked out that way last year, I think. Because we had maybe about three weeks or so. If you have a calendar there, I don't have a calendar handy.
So council, if you removed August third, that would leave just that meeting on the seventeenth. So you'd have the two weeks prior to it and then the two weeks after it.
What if we move, oh, what if we move the seventeenth?
You can, if you wanted to do that, I was, I was suggesting remove August third and then you're, you'd have July twentieth and you'd have July twenty seventh, the third, the tenth, and then you reconvene on the seventeenth and you'd have the twenty fourth and the thirty first.
Okay. It's up to council. And if we met on the third and did not meet on the seventeenth, that would give us how many weeks in a row?
Then you'd have the top, the seventeenth, the twenty fourth and thirty first. That might actually not be. It, it. So that things are.
Is that legal? Cause we have to have two meetings. I'm sorry.
Meetings, Charter only requires that you meet once a month. But if it, to have four weeks without a council meeting, there could be something that needs council approval. So four weeks is a, is a long period of time not to me.
All right, Councilmember Brown?
Um, I would like to move that we re, re-move August third from this current schedule of council meetings.
Is there support for that? Seeing no support for our, removing August third, is there another date suggested to remove?
You know, I'm sorry, I do support Artisur. I totally missed that. I apologize.
Okay. You, so that there's a motion to remove August third and a support for that motion. Any discussion? Comments? Seeing none, Clerk Kalenga, would you please call the row?
On the amended schedule, Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, on the resolution is amended unless there's further discussion. Okay. Mayor. Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, council, on to the last item on the agenda. Resolution number twenty twenty dash two three six, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas members of City Council will act as liaison to city boards and commissions to act as conduance of information both to City Council and to individual boards and commissions. And whereas council liaisons will hold that position for two years until the seating of the next council. And whereas council would determine their nomination and majority vote, which, excuse me, whereas council would determine through nomination and majority vote, which council member will act as liaison to individual boards and commissions. Whereas it is determined, the below boards and commissions will have a council liaison. Art Commission, Human Relations Commission, Police Advisory Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Sustainability Commission, Planning Commission, Historic District Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals.
All right, thank you. I had not received anything from any council people expressing which commission they would like to, to sit on. Is any, with everyone, is there anyone that would like to change? Maybe I'll put it that way first. Is everyone content and satisfied where they are? And Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Um, I apologize, we're not getting, getting to you about that. I would like to continue on the Sustainability Commission. When we last discussed this, you'd asked me if I'd take up the Parks and Rec and I know that there's another council person that would, would like to do that. So I, I certainly opened that up and I have an interest in the Human Relations Commission as well. I don't know if there's anybody else that has interest in that.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I'm, so I'm, I'm a little confused. Are we nominating one person and then voting on a person?
Well, what I have done is I've, I've pretty much opened it so that people, each council person can state where they would like to be. And if that's what they want to volunteer for, then, you know, it would be accepted.
Well, this resolution, it could be amended by council. It sets forth a, a, a process of nomination and then majority vote by council. But if, if council prefers to do it the way that it was previously, that is perfectly.
All right, I'm, I move to nominate Nicole to the Police Advisory Commission.
Well, first, this need to, and then we would, then we can go through that process.
I move that. Resolution two thirty six.
Support.
That's good.
Okay. It's been moved and second to adopt Resolution two thirty six.
So I'm confused a little bit too. If, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I, I felt like when we talked about this at our last meeting, it felt slightly unresolved. So I wasn't clear exactly kind of where things were left off. I, I know for me, I, I like zoning. Um, I have an interest in that one. So that's kind of where I have an, I want to express interest. Um, but I wasn't sure where we left off in some of that. Um, so I guess I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay.
Well, so I have a question. It sounds like we're supposed to nominate people in this process.
My, my aim for this resolution was to clarify a process in how.
Right.
Zon seats are filled.
Okay.
Approved, then following this, we'll have that nomination and vote for each.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yes, I appreciate that clarification too, because in the, in the past, it has been by volunteering for selecting and volunteering for the commission that a person wanted. All right, is there any more discussion on the motion, on the resolution? All right, seeing none, Clerk Kalenga, would you call the row?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. And then the way that I had thought I'd, I'd do this is we'll just go down the list. If someone wants to nominate for Art Commission and then we'll have a vote on that and we'll just go through these until they're all filled.
I have a.
Great, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Somerville.
So how does this work with, with Councilmember Jones Chance? Should we wait to do this until after the appointment process? Because it seems like we can't fully do this tonight. So I would, I would move to hold off on that until we fill the Ward one vacancy.
Support that.
That, that, that sounds good. Just again, just outlines the process.
Yeah.
I don't think we necessarily need to, to have a, a, a motion, but if there's consensus among council, I can bring it back December first for, for the nomination and vote.
Cool.
Is, is it okay if we're in the, in the positions that we are just until this takes place?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Cool. Thank you.
Is there a consensus on bringing it back? Okay, thank you. All right, Clerk Kalenga, we'll.
Okay.
Back.
The next item on the agenda, uh, council is nomination and election of Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yeah, I move to nominate, um, Councilmember Brown to the role of Mayor Pro Tem for the next two years.
Is there a second?
Am I able?
Okay, Councilmember Jones Chance, you seconded? You gave it before. Okay, so it's been moved and supported. Um, that nomination for Mayor, for Councilmember Brown to become Mayor Pro Tem. Um, all in favor or Clerk Kalenga, call the row, please. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you so much. And I, I just want to say something really briefly. Um, I want to thank, um, the council members, the city manager and the staff who reached out to me over, um, the past few days of my grandmother's passing. I see that we don't have, um, council proposed business and so I wanted to make sure to thank you all because that has been greatly appreciated. Um, and I also thank you all for your confidence in, um, selecting me to be Mayor Pro Tem under the leadership of our Mayor Richardson, who I would also like to formally congratulate as well. Um, this meeting has been really hard for me, so my quietness and I'm trying to balance it all, but I really do appreciate your confidence and I will not let you down. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Brown. And I want to, to say I did not know of the passing of your grandmother. That's why you haven't heard from me. I have been challenged with receiving emails now for the last almost two weeks and found out that it actually has to do with the area that we're in. So, but my sincere condolences, uh, was it paternal or maternal?
Paternal, my mother's mother.
Oh, okay. My condolences to your mother. I will give her a call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate. And congratulations again on being, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. I look forward to, uh, us working together. Thank you. All right. Okay, uh, we've already covered ten.
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, Councilmember Morgan, I think was going to say something.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I, I was just gonna say, I think, I just want to congratulate, um, Councilwoman Nicole Brown. I do think that choosing the Mayor Pro Tem could have been postponed, just like some of the, like with the mayor seat, um, still making the decision, was decision to make mayor. However, the council, uh, Ward one seat is still, uh, in question. And so I just still think of, as a full body should make that decision, but I still respect the decision of the council people and congratulations.
Thank you for your comments. Yes. Councilmember Chan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to abstain from voting the rest of the meeting if, uh, everyone thinks that's more appropriate.
No, you are a count, you are a sitting council member, so you do have a right to vote. Okay. All right. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Clerk Kalenga?
Mayor, the, the last item prior before adjournment is just remarks from the mayor.
All right. Uh, I wrote out a few little things here. I just want to say congratulations to our newly elected council members. Both, uh, both completed appointed terms and now are elected for full four-year terms. Congratulations on that. You've had a, um, gone through your first campaign cycle, so, um, congratulations on that. Uh, we want to thank you for the, for the service that you have given and we look forward to, uh, working with you in the, in the coming days and years that are set before us. And those are sincere congratulations to both of you and I, and sincere looking forward to working together. Um, and I want to say a great, a great big thank you to Clerk Kalenga and his staff for the fantastic job that they did with the election. It went without any glitches and a, he received a full county approval. And that's, um, that's really a, a good report. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, and an added thank you to, um, in voice of appreciation to all of the poll workers. Um, this was a very difficult time to, uh, to, uh, work. There were poll workers and then there were volunteers, some paid, some not paid, but they were all, uh, there and did, uh, again, did a fantastic job. And a special thank you to the Ann Arbor Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, uh, sorority for providing breakfast, lunch and snacks for all and water, excuse me, for all of our, um, for all of our poll workers at all of our voting sites. Um, that was very, it was very generous of them. I just happened to be at City Hall today and saw that there were, um, plenty, there was plenty of snacks and water left over. So, uh, special thank you to them. And just want to say to council, uh, I know this has been a very difficult time for all of us going through the resignation of the, uh, former mayor, uh, me as Mayor Pro Tem moving into the mayor's office and the confusion that, uh, has been wrought, wrought, uh, wrought around it partially because of the, uh, city charter and because of the way the state laws are written. Uh, I take this position very seriously and I am, I wa, I love this city. It's my home city. Uh, I was born here. I went, I'm a proud product of Ypsilanti Public Schools. I'm a graduate of Eastern Michigan University. I lived away for a few years, but I came back and I've been back here longer than I lived away. I am committed to the City of Ypsilanti and I am hoping that we can all work together. We can set aside any differences, any thoughts about, um, what should have happened or what could have happened. And things have been settled now based on state law. And I just hope that we can all work together. I know some people are disappointed that I'm still in this seat, but I just believe that it, this is the way it has fallen. And I just want to see our city move forward and I can't, we cannot move forward. If we are divided, we must come together, we must work together. I have seen some things, even looking at this council here. We are making some history. At this given time, we have four members of council who are African-American or black, whichever we choose to call ourselves. And that is the first time that that has happened in the history of the City of Ypsilanti. Not only do we have four council members, but we have a black city manager for the first time. And, uh, I, in this, and I do believe this is the first time we've had a female city manager in the City of Ypsilanti. So I just want to say that this is a time that we can move forward. It's not saying that, uh, that it leaves, doesn't leave out our other, uh, council members. We all want to work together. We cannot work, we cannot achieve anything if we have four against three. We need to work together. We are going to have differences. That is always going to be. But I do believe that we can operate and function without our differences causing a, a division. We cannot operate and function if we are divided. We must come together. We have seen the division in this country over the last four years. We have seen how. We have seen how it has torn this country almost asunder and we will do not, I do not want to see that happen in uh the city of Ypsilanti. I believe that we are bigger than that. I believe that we are better than that. And I believe if we set aside, each one of us individually, set aside every other diff, any differences that we have with any of us. I believe if we go to each other, if we got some problems with each other, let's not be afraid. Let's go to one another and let's say, hey, let's sit down and reason this thing out. Let's work together and come to a place where we can. Let's work this thing out to the place where we can work together for the good of the city. And that's what, that's my heart tonight. I do believe that love is the answer. And if we set aside all the disagreements and any any form of hate or dislike or anything and focus around, love is the answer. I believe that we can really move city of Ypsilanti forward. I have seen in their times over the ci, in the last twenty years that I have been on council. I have seen our city being a forerunner and a leader in many different areas. And I would like to see us be a leader in working together, a leader that is a a group, a leader as a city, leading uh others that we can, cities can come together, councils can work together and they can have a city that is growing, thriving and that it can't be cut, we can become a grand city. I believe that. It's just a matter of us working together. I don't believe that there is anything, anything too difficult for us to accomplish, anything too difficult for us to move ahead if we put our hearts and minds together and work towards it. I thank you. I thank you. I ask, um, I congratulate everyone again. And I just say, let's move forward together. Cause love really is the answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, if there's no other comments or questions or discussion, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Also move.
For, I'm greeting everybody.
It's been moved and supported. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Good night, guys.